It is now six forty seven, uh, we will start the meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh pursuant to Governor Baker's uh orders. Uh suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we will be a re-meet a meeting by technology. Uh all remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Will be allowed, specific information is found on the website and on the agenda. Uh, members may do so per the agenda instructions. No in-person attendance, every effort will be made to invite the public. Members uh present electronically. Are Garfield Reed, Chrisa, John Katz, and I'm Ananda, Bill Cook. And myself Fred Clark. As other members uh. Join, I will uh. Recognize them. And again, thank you very much, I apologize for the uh. For the delay in getting started and hopefully we can go a little more uh going forward. We have uh. One. Meeting minutes, if people have had a chance to look at them from November twenty second. Uh if everybody had a cha- if anybody had a chance to look at them. Uh and. Can we have a motion to approve them or to change them?
Uh, motion, motion to approve.
Okay, uh. Is there any discussion? Any changes?
I have one minor change. On the first page, uh. This first time I'm quoted, it says distribute postcards throughout the neighborhood, I believe I said throughout the town.
Okay, we will make that change.
Okay.
Um, we'll need to take a vote, uh votes are roll call. You can vote even if you were not present, or if you prefer, you can abstain. Uh, so this is a vote to accept the November twenty second meeting minutes. Uh, Bill Cook.
Hi.
Garfield.
Hi.
Chrisa.
Hi.
John Katz. We'll call it I, okay, and Ananda?
Hi.
Okay, it is unanimous by roll call, thank you very much. I wanted to just, so the way what I would would like to approach tonight. Is I'd like to spend the bulk of our time. Looking forward uh to the next year or two. And kind of assessing where we are and where we need to be going going forward. Coming up with some new ideas, uh, how can we, how can we make this committee work? And what are the tools that we'll need to 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 pull that off and and do that? But before we get into that, um, I have a few updates that I would like to share with you. You probably uh all saw the advertisements for the um. Grove Street House that Habitat's developing. Uh, it's been posted on the town website and on our website, uh, thank you, Bill. Uh, for for including that and um. The applications are all going to Habitat. Uh, the inquiries are all going to Habitat directly. Uh, mostly because the town doesn't have the personnel to to handle that, and Habitat's a better coordinator. So um, that process has started to collect. People, they've had a number of people already, a number of people from Great Barrington, even before the um. Uh, excuse me, the information went up. Uh, they told me that they've had a number of inquiries about it, it's a really, really nice little house and uh. I'm sure it'll be a great asset to to come back. It is, you know, completely, there are some photos that Bill posted as well from construction. And it has been completely renovated. Uh, in terms of construction, they've had all of their um. Preliminary inspections, the last time I talked to them was a couple of weeks ago. And they said that the insulation, uh, the the ins- ins- insulation people were coming. That they'd had all of their rough inspections for plumbing, electrical uh construction and and that, so that's going forward. Um, our other major, so any questions?
Yes, I have a question, uh, Fred, I have a couple, one is can we see these applicants? And can we do a little PR work perhaps with maybe us or some notation, maybe. Be honest with, I haven't seen all of it, maybe there's something that lets people know that this was kind of done through the Affordable Housing. Uh, trust fund and they can uh do the same. They contact that kind of thing, you know, a little publicity. And can we see the the applicants, I would like to know who 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 Habitat has.
Uh, I do not know the answer to that question. I I I want to read just one more point of order, uh, Joe Method has has joined us. He is another member of the Affordable Housing Trust, and for the record, I just want to recognize that he's here. Um, to answer your question, Garfield, I do not. Know if we can see the applicants, ha- Habitat is coordinating all of the applicant pool. And uh handling the lottery that is required for for these uh applicants. Um, for the selection process.
May I ask, is anyone, is everyone comfortable with this, is anyone feel like I feel it's okay if you don't? But. I got a little Ron Reagan in me there, trust will verify.
Well, you know, I don't know why we're supposed to know. Uh, about the applicants, I uh, would you like to explain? But I also would like to find out, since I'm talking, uh, where do I, can I see those pictures, Bill? Because I just went on towns and.
Go on the Housing Trust website.
Yeah, but what is, do we have a access to the website, I don't know where's the our website.
It's GBhousing.org.
Oh, GBhousing.org, okay, I have no, no idea. Thank you.
Sure. And it's under Programs, Habitat Programs.
Okay.
There's there a banner across it too?
Yeah, there's a banner on the homepage too. It will take you right to it.
Okay, so from from Garfield, I would like to know, why do you think we need to see all the applicants? Because we only are, we are, we can give them if they apply to us. For the down payment, but other than that, it's not our. Anymore, our. Our business.
Just maybe it's just me, then I guess I just wanted to know, maybe if we're getting the Great Barrington preference first and things like that, those are.
I don't believe we have a Great Barrington preference built into the selection. I don't believe that that was possible when we discussed it. They have told me that they have quite a few applicants from Great Barrington.
Alright. Not surprising.
Yeah.
Say it again, I missed it. What did you say, Bill, I missed that?
Not surprising. That they have a lot of applicants from Great Barrington.
Okay.
Actually, what kind of doggy do you got?
Uh, it's a, it's. It's a um. Tibetan terrier. And uh, and she is just.
It's a what kind of terrier?
Tibetan.
Tibetan.
Yeah, and she basically is a Zoom dog now. She loves, you know, whenever I am on Zoom, she wants to be with, sitting on me.
Uh, okay, um. Basically, Garfield, Habitat's handling this and uh we will. Uh, keep in touch, but uh, you know, and we have given it to our uh. Uh, town, public relations, uh, folks, Alan Lair, I believe. Uh, to 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 publicize.
Oh, yeah, good, good, thank you.
The regarding the um. North Plain Road site. Uh, I've had a couple of calls, Bill has sat in on them as well. Uh, we're up to, in the weeds with the legal stuff. Um, the. Uh. Documents are being prepared to go in front of the planning board, they're going to be searching, seeking a comprehensive permit. Uh, I don't know the whole details of the permitting process, but I believe that they're going to be um. On the agenda February twelfth. Uh, which the planning board meets twice a month, I'm. And it's uh the first meeting of the month uh in um. In February, I believe, first or second meeting. Uh. And that may not be the only meeting, I'm sure that they'll be in front of the planning board a couple of different times. But in order to do that, the engineer is preparing. More comprehensive documents than we have right now. We've been working with the lawyer, I've been sitting in, uh, talking with the Habitat's lawyer. The town um. Wants to count the North Plain Road houses as part of our affordable housing inventory and mass. Uh, Housing HDC, Housing Development Corporation. Has a format for us to do that, to qualify. Uh, those houses as part of the permanent inventory. As you may know, the each town has a, well. It tries to maintain at least a ten percent um inventory of affordable housing. Or we end up getting uh hit by forty B complaints and things like that, so. And right now, the town is over the minimum limit. But they want to continue that and they would like to keep these as part of their inventory. In order to do that, there's some legal and paperwork stuff that we have to go through. And as part of that, uh, I believe um. They had classified, as you may recall, we are, Habitat is is building thirty houses. On the North Plain Road site, that is what's going in front of the planning board. Um, the lawyer had suggested that twenty-five of those houses could be part of the inventory. And in order to do that, they had to be sold for no more than eighty percent AMI. Uh, I think that number is still fluid and it may end up being twenty houses as part of the inventory, it's basically. It 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 binds them to an eighty percent AMI um in perpetuity. Uh. Whereas the other houses could be sold at a hundred percent AMI, and I I'm just concerned that. With the cost right now, with the future marketability, that we shouldn't have the majority of the houses limited to eighty percent AMI, but. Um, those things are going forward. Um. We have a couple of um. Prototypes of the houses that they're looking at building, they tend to be twelve to fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, this one and two-story houses, primarily two-story houses. Um. And so I've I've had a chance to take a look at them and 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 provide some comments uh on those, so those things are. Are going forward. Um, planning board's the big notice there. Uh, on my agenda, I put communications. And basically, I wanted to say, uh, I've had a couple of notes that I want to share with you. One is, uh, the town has a possibility of acquiring a vacant piece of land. Uh, on a bus route. They have not acquired it yet, but they inquired if the Affordable Housing Trust would be interested in. Uh. Taking that land as part of the town and uh. You know, building houses, this is a long term, this is a couple of years kind of thing, we haven't acquired the land yet, the town. The town has not acquired the land yet, and once acquired. This land could be used for recreation or other uh purposes, so it's no guarantee that the land would be um. Then dedicated over to the Affordable Housing Trust, but I just want to tell you that those kinds of things come up. It would be free for us, it would be at no cost.
Where is the?
Where's the land, Fred?
Uh. It's on the bus route.
Thank you.
Maybe a little more bait.
Uh, I don't know. I I hesitate to say any more than that because. I'm sure it would. I'll, uh, you know, who knows?
Um, should we? Should we write a letter uh as a board um suggesting that we would very much like to use that for affordable housing?
I think the board would prefer that they know a little more details before they get involved with that.
So it does looks like you do have some more details, but you're not able to share it with us, or? What is the story?
The story is that the land belongs now to a private nonprofit. That has decided that they have little use for the land. And they approached the town of Great Barrington and. Began preliminary discussions about asking if Great Barrington would have a use for this land. In Great Barrington. Uh. I was approached and we, I said, yes, very definitely. Uh, this is a flat piece of land, very good soil. Uh, near the bus route with uh sewer uh available nearby. Um. Sewer and water available nearby and uh. I said, yep, we could do it. Um, but, you know. Ananda, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, without um pushing you for too much detail, can you give us a sense of? Um. Like size in terms of how much housing could be put on it?
Probably about four houses.
Thank you.
Um. Anyway. We, I don't think we, I don't think we need to do anything right now, um. It's just. I wanted to share with you that this comes up and then, you know, I I really feel strongly that. If we get too much into the details, too, if I ahead of ourselves, we're just gonna um. Start something that is not necessary.
Do we need, do we need to just say like, yes, yes, as a board, we're entrusted?
Um. Yes, and I think that's going to be part of a bigger discussion that we have later. Um, the other communication that I wanted to share with you is one of the members of the Select Board. Approached me and said that they would like to. Uh, suggest an earmark um. Or a a dedication funding from the town budget. To the Affordable Housing Trust, and they asked me how much would be a good amount. And I said a half a million dollars. But uh, and I was told probably not all at once, but maybe over a couple of years, maybe, you know, so. Uh, Bill and I brainstormed an idea, uh. Basically, I feel that, uh, so that the money, the source for this money would come from the room tax. So the state of Massachusetts collects a fee on rental, uh motel rentals, hotel motel. And rentals, the state keeps a fair percentage of that themselves. But under a local law, uh, Great Barrington gets a great deal of it. Great Barrington can't budget for that money because you never know that it's coming in, so. The money falls to free cash, and then the following year, the Select Board can allocate that free cash. Uh, and in the past, they've used it to reduce the tax burden on the town. The total, I understand, is around a million dollars that the town of Great Barrington gets. And it's the sources from the room tax, and that's important because I feel like. The number of rentals, the success that we've had in Great Barrington with the rentals. Directly impacts or adversely impacts affordable housing in Great Barrington. Therefore, the logic is, since this uh tax is related to. The source of our uh, one of the sources of our 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 issues. Um. Why can't we call it an impact fee, uh, or treat it like an impact fee, in other words. Some of this money should go back to affordable housing, and the Affordable Housing Trust is the best source for that, so um. My feeling is that we should ask for two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh right now during the budget season.
Great idea.
Uh, and Ananda, can you um?
So to clarify, this is separate from the short-term rental tax?
Yes, the short-term rental tax will bring in about ten thousand dollars, the short-term rental tax, as you may recall. Uh, was, there was a second vote at town meeting last spring. That uh, the will of the town, the will of the um. Town meeting was that the short-term rental tax go to the Affordable Housing Trust. And I say the will because town meeting can't obligate a future town meeting, it has to be. A line item each year. But basically, town meeting acted and said, yes, short-term rental. But the order of magnitude is is off by a hundred times, no, hundred times. Yeah, a hundred times, um, ten thousand dollars from the short-term rental tax, maybe uh, two hundred. Uh. Two hundred times that, no. Twenty times that. Uh, two hundred thousand, you know. No. Math. Separate, a million dollars comes in from the room tax, ten thousand dollars comes in from the short-term rental tax. Neither one of those are directly given to us, but the will of town meeting is that we get the room tax, the ten thousand. Or the short-term rental tax. Okay?
Yeah.
Enough. Um.
I think we ask for fifty percent of the room tax, whatever that may be.
I agree.
Right.
Regarding that, we need to not just ask for money, we need to give some ideas of what we're going to do with it. We, we're not going to be successful if they just say, oh, boy, we'll have some ideas once we get the money. We really need to buckle that, I mean, that's the other part that I want to talk about is. If we had this money, if if it's successful, um. What would we do? Uh, beyond the programs that we run right now, beyond the programs that are challenging right now. Uh, so, you know, let's hold that discussion, Ananda, you have a a comment as well?
Well, I just, um, my question is, who would we be asking for? That line item?
Sure, the Select Board. We would um ask the Select Board. To uh, one of the members of the Select Board has told me or or shared with me.
Put it into the budgeting process with the finance committee.
The budgeting process referred to the finance committee, if then it's successful, it would go to town meeting as part of the budget. Uh. If that would be for the current, the 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 budget starting, you know. In July fiscal.
Yeah, after, yeah, twenty-four.
Four, I guess.
It might be worse, um.
Or it might, they may, they may ask us to wait another year, I don't know.
Yeah, it may, I'm just thinking that if that, if that money right now is going to reduce the amount. Our taxes are increasing year to year, and they are increasing year to year. Um, and that's hardest on the same folks Affordable Housing is for. I'm just thinking, I just think we might want to keep, you know, be timely around this budgeting process, but also. Make sure we're thinking through. Um, if this is the best way to get something through.
Um. I think the whole idea is that we're looking to have a more reliable source of funding. As you may recall, you know, the, when the state set up Affordable Housing Trust. They set them up hand and glove with the Community Preservation Act. And assumed that the Community Preservation Act would be the funding source. There are a number of municipalities in the state, across the state, some of the wealthier ones that do. Fund from the general funds budget. Rather than. Ask for money from the general fund, I felt that this is a source. Um, that isn't budgeted, that falls to free cash, that has a direct relationship to affordable housing. As an impact on affordable housing. I think the case can be made, it, I, I will admit that it's a bit of a stretch, but I do think there's a case to can be made that. There's a a direct correlation.
Yes.
I I I think the way we use that funding, the um. Instrumental in 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 getting that money, you know, for instance, if we had it as a revolving fund where we weren't. Completely diminished, depleting it each year, but rather loaning it out and getting it back. Um, you know. That could be more successful, seed money, if you will. Uh, but we can talk about those kinds of things.
Yeah, I I think if we had a half a million dollars every year. We wouldn't need a half a million every year going forward because essentially we would be buying. Even a single family or a two-family house. Doing whatever rehab is necessary and then selling it to at an affordable price. So we get back a pretty good percentage of that money every year.
Okay, good point, Ananda, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I just to clarify, I'm not against the concept, I ju- I'm more saying I think it might be wise for us to. To um. Make sure with, we are pursuing the most advantageous route politically and if. Um. If Great Barrington taxpayers and residents who vote in town hall or or in town meeting. Are currently basically relying on these funds to make our current living situation affordable. Then it might be hard for us to get them to to allocate those funds differently. I, but I I absolutely support having the conversation, I just, I was just urging us to. Consider what we might need to get something passed at at town meeting.
I appreciate your input, thank you.
Oh, could you, I'm sorry, um, Fred, could you repeat, what is the money right now used for, because I missed that part?
Okay, um, the room tax comes in and it basically comes in as free cash. To the budget, that is. It falls to the next year's budget after it comes in, it can't be spent in the same year. Uh, and it is then used for general obligations and for pay for the school. Uh. Budget to basically reduce the um property taxes. In other words, it's a million dollars that comes into the budget that helps, that's not collected as property tax. So that it can reduce the. Used for the operating cost, basically.
Okay, thank you.
I want to then talk about the uh Community Preservation Act. Um, as you may recall, uh, I went before them. And uh, we asked for three hundred and forty thousand dollars for fiscal year um. Twenty-four. Uh, they were lukewarm, let's say, they had a number of other affordable housing requests. Uh, from private developers and from construct. Uh, and um. They were somewhat lukewarm uh about uh our. Uh, programs, um. They um asked me to. Put together a. A breakout of what are each of our programs with, and in the packet that I shared over the weekend. There was a draft budget for twenty-four, for fiscal year of twenty-four, showing three hundred and forty thousand dollars. When, and I can throw that up on my screen in a little bit if you like, and um. And a narrative about each one of those programs, so basically to just to recap, you know, we we do the. down payment assistance, the rental uh, assistance program. There was some money in there for either a ADU or a tiny homes project. Uh, and there was some money to uh, acquire um, the Pope Street, Mahawi Street uh, house that we briefly talked about before. Not this year, but next year in fiscal year twenty four, a year from now, basically. Um, the Community Preservation Act did uh, discuss many of those things. And they were concerned about the amount of detail that was provided for the uh, ADU support program uh, or, and or tiny house program. And I tried to explain that um, the reason the details weren't there was that this is a program for next year. So that when we, we have a, a, a an outline of a program right now, we're working on the details, but um, the funding that we're talking about when we're going forward to CPA uh, is for fiscal year twenty four. Basically, the money that we'll be spending a year, a year and a half from now, eighteen months from now. And so my uh, my answer to them was, yeah, we don't have that many details, but we're working on fleshing them out. We have a pretty good outline right now. We'll get all of the forms placed by the time we need to spend the money. Well, they weren't very receptive to that and they basically, I had a seventy five thousand dollar line item on that. And they reduced our request back to two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. The good news is, and, and this is, by the way, the CPA committee only recommends to town meeting. This still has to be approved by town meeting. The funds then would be available in July of uh, this summer. The um, good news is that there are, the money will be available for us for any housing, any housing purpose. So anything that's legal under the CPA or the, I'm sorry, strike that, under the Affordable Housing Act um, that uh, would be a source. So we could use that money if we're um, uh, if, if we're successful at town meeting for acquisitions or for rental housing or for um, uh, some of the programs that we currently run. So that's, that's good news. Go to town meeting, please vote for it.
That is good, good news, but how much money do we have right now, Fred?
Uh, well, um, I shared a report, Chris uh, had printed a report. It's the one that's uh, landscape with a yellow bar on the left side. Basically, we have at this moment snapshot in time, a hundred and forty five thousand dollars.
A hundred and forty five?
Hundred and forty five thousand.
Yeah.
Of that money, the only com, I wouldn't even call it a commitment. Let's call it a discussion. Um, we have been running the uh, we've been asking Construct to run a, a COVID nineteen uh, emergency rental uh, support program. My conversations with Construct with Jane is that we'll be needing another fifty thousand dollars to replenish that program, that the pro, that there are still people who are desperately in need of um, funds. And that uh, we're not in any position to stop the money right now. This, the other part is that the number of the programs that were running gangbusters uh, from the state and from others uh, from Berkshire to Conic, for instance, have dried up. They, they, you know, the programs that were at the height of COVID uh, no longer exist. So um, the way we've been running this money, this pro, program is the Affordable Housing Trust money has been last money in. They use some of the money for their counseling, for their administrative overhead. And when they do, somebody comes to them and says, I'm, 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 I'm getting kicked out. I'm losing my apartment. Can you help me? They then work with them and find any other sources that they can uh, from the state. They, excuse me, they, you know, get them qualified for all of those sources. And only when everything else is exhausted, have they been tapping into the um, emergency housing funds that we've been providing. That's a long way of saying we have a hundred and forty five thousand, but fifty thousand of it, at least on paper, is spoken for.
By Construct.
Yes, and by the way, that won't happen until you vote for it. Um. So uh, it, it also won't happen until uh, um, Construct asks for the money. They need to formally, I, I've told Jane that she needs to send an email or a request asking for the money. So.
Right.
Um.
Well, has she asked, she, she, she has that new project that they just bought on South Main Street.
I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, it's a big building.
The one in New Marlboro?
Well, there's one in New Marlboro and I think she told me that Jane.
Oh, the Windflower.
Excuse me?
Windflower Inn?
Windflower Inn, right.
Um, uh, 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 we'll get back to that a second. I want to recognize, Ananda. Um. With a question?
Yeah, well, I was just wondering if it would perhaps be useful for situations like Jane's or the Marble Block? If we had a simple, um, I mean, very simple format that helped us collect the information we'd like to see in our request? If that would streamline things?
Um, you know, this is new territory for this committee. We haven't uh, been in this situation that much before. So I think uh, we've handled them up to this point as sort of one-off ideas. But I think your comment is a good one as we uh, learn from each of these experiences. I want, John and uh, Ananda have reminded me, the other projects that I wanted to talk about was because I think this happened a couple of days after we last met in December. Um. The Town of Great Barrington received about two point one million in ARPA money. I may be off by a couple hundred thousand in that. But they committed a, a, a fair percentage of it. So ARPA was uh, American Rescue Act funding, had to be spent by the fiscal year twenty six, committed by twenty four, twenty five, and spent by twenty six. Uh, we had asked for some of the money, but uh, instead of that, they ended up spending uh, the, the town put out a press release. Windflower that we had supported with a letter of support, but no funding. The town committed six hundred thousand dollars, which was basically enough for the down payment. And the um, Windflower is thirteen rooms with en suite bedrooms that are going to be used for uh, workforce housing and affordable housing. So basically, short term rentals in a, a, oh. You'd almost call it a bo, boarding house or a multifamily house.
Right.
In exchange for that, the town has asked for uh, I believe it's five affordable housing units. This is important because to us, because A, it's five affordable housing units and B, they've asked us to be the uh, agency that holds the deed restriction. So um, you need to have somebody on paper who will be there in perpetuity to hold the deed restriction. And uh, they've asked us to do that. Similarly, on the Marble Block that we voted for uh, a hundred thousand dollars from Affordable Housing Trust, the town provided an additional five hundred thousand for a total of six hundred, our hundred, five hundred from ARPA money for the Marble Block.
Right.
And as you recall, uh, our hundred thousand was in exchange for one affordable housing unit. The town um, requested and received a deed restriction on four additional for a total of five uh, deed restricted units there. ARPA money is um, Bill, do you remember, or Bill or Garfield, do you remember what percentage of AMI Garpa money is?
It's sixty.
Sixty or six? Thank you. Um. Whereas we uh, we told them a hundred percent AMI for our one unit. And then there will be um, I believe, three other units there that will be affordable but not deed restricted.
Um, do you know if they're permanently affordable?
Yes.
Okay.
Under town money, it's permanent. There was none of this restriction. And they're for CDC.
Yeah.
Um, the re, one of the reasons, again, that's important is that we will be holding the deed restriction. And I have a template uh, that I just received this afternoon uh, for what that deed restriction is going to look like um, there. So uh, that's something that we're going to have to vote to accept. And we can talk about it at a future meeting um, there, but I wanted to let you know that that's a process. Phew.
Yeah.
I think that's all I've got.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question of Bill? Bill, um, I can't find any of those pictures anywhere. Um. That you, that Fred said that you uh, posted on, on the website, on our website, Affordable Housing. I went on the website. I didn't find any pictures.
Uh, if you go to programs.
On the programs?
On the programs, the very, I believe it's the very bottom one is Habitat.
What is it? Um. What is it, Bill? Town of?
It's GBHousing.org.
GB does, GB. I, I can pull it up. Yeah, very good at that, right?
Yeah, when I went on programs, there was just the one picture of uh, it was, there was just not any other pictures except the picture, generic picture of the forty uh, Grove.
So I've just thrown it up on the screen if you can see that.
Yeah.
Can you, everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is our website. So either you could go under programs, do, these are dropdowns or this is dropdowns. And you could pull out Habitat programs.
Yeah.
Or this banner right here. You see this banner?
Yeah.
Click on that.
Oh.
The Forty Grove Street project comes up. There's a picture of the house location. Um, there is, this is the flyer that Habitat put together with their contact information. And this same flyer has been distributed widely uh, and, and through the, the town. You'll notice that our logo is included here uh, and uh, as well as the Town of Great Barrington uh, here. If you then click on this banner, you see when my cursor goes across it, it changes color?
Yeah, I see it.
You can then get photos of work in progress.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So uh, we'll try to get more photos, but there's a happy worker. You can see though that they've stripped the house interior all the way down to the studs and they're building it back up. Um. I believe these gentlemen have Teconic High School uh, helmets on.
Yeah, they're students.
Students. So the, this is really right down to the bare, uh, the bare bones. In other words, everything's going to be brand new uh, in this house. And uh, they, there were some structural issues with the foundation that they've solved. This house is right next to a little public park to um, that uh, Great Barrington has. And so the rest, I mean, this, Bill created this website and I think Joe has some help updating it. But all of the programs that we have are dropdowns. If you haven't been there before, uh, this helps you to uh, keep up with, with what what our face is to the uh, outer world there.
Go back to, go back to, Fred, go back to those participating banks for a minute.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I see. Oh.
So we've had some uh, notes about uh, some of the people have changed jobs and we need to keep up with that. I don't know whether we need to have actual person listed or whether, uh, because it, it's always changing. But um.
Yeah, but that's a good list of banks.
Uh, I don't see anywhere the price for the house. Is that like a normal thing that there is no price?
Uh.
The price will be determined by Habitat based on the income of the successful applicant.
No kidding?
You're, you probably, you're going to pay less than it costs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but that's really interesting because they want, they want to up, people to apply. Meanwhile, what are the, what are the actual um, um, criteria uh, for choosing the applicant?
Lottery.
A lottery?
Yes.
Well, once you meet, if you meet income
Right.
criteria, so there's going to be basic income criteria. Um. Then you're entered into a lottery and then it's by lottery. Okay, and that is required by law, correct, Fred?
It is required by law. Um, Habitat also requires you to do um, a fairly rigorous financial counseling um,
Yeah.
uh, uh, training, basically, and homeownership training so that you understand uh, maintenance issues, uh, budgeting uh, quite a bit there. And, and uh, of course, everybody knows about the sweat equity uh, requirement that people need to help build their own house. So. Um, uh.
So she, she, she made the, does she make the decision as to who, to whom to sell the house?
Yes.
Yes.
Habitat.
Excuse me?
Habitat does, yes.
Through the lottery, yes.
You are.
Through the lottery, yeah.
Right, so it's not like somebody's reviewing applications and comparing them to select the best one. It's that they have to review the applications based on whether or not they meet the criteria to be in the lottery.
That's right.
If everybody who meets the criteria to be in the lottery goes in the lottery and then it's selection by lottery.
Right.
That's great.
Um, I've thrown up on the screen. If you can see it, I don't know if I can make it bigger if you need to.
I'd be nice.
Uh, I can try. Um, this is Chris Rembold's um, summary of where we are. And if you look on the right of your screen at the bottom, that's the balance available right there, a hundred and forty five thousand. But this gives you an idea. All of this uh, yellow bar here are the CPA funds that we've been awarded to date and the um, uh, awards that we've made from those things. And you can see from some of these funds, if you look on the right column here, there are some funds left available uh, in some of those funds. Um. This hundred thousand is what's left from the two hundred thousand for fiscal year twenty three, after we made the award to the Marble Block. Um, it is my hope that we can bring some of these funds to zero this year, that we can, you know, tap into them and, and spend them down to zero so that we're not carrying money uh, Uh, for several years on our books.
Yeah, particularly, particularly for the. CDC funds.
Yes. Um. This, uh. I'm colorblind, so I don't know what color, beige, teal, whatever it's deal. Uh, unrestricted funds, we were given fifteen thousand dollars seed money. We basically use that for administration. Uh, most recently. We spent two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents to renew the website, uh, for two more years. So, uh. It doesn't cost us much. It's a great tool to, to get us out. So you, you folks were asking where we were at. For, um, funding, I've given you this document, so, um. And let's see.
Would it be a pain in the neck for you to send us the, that document?
I did.
Oh, you did already?
I sent it this weekend.
Oh.
You should have it.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, I got it.
Uh, let's see. Let's go here, give me two seconds. To.
November twenty-second.
Uh. Back to about one hundred. This is, uh, what I put together. Uh, this year, this was never, this was only a draft document. Uh, I believe I showed this to you before and at the time I called it a worksheet. Uh, and. The idea was. Oh wait, this is the twenty-four budget.
Right.
Three budget. Yeah. Sorry, I want to start with this one. They look the same, but up here, up here, it says twenty-three. So. These are the kinds of funds that we've been running, the down payment, the emergency rental. And then looking at the North Plain Road, the tiny house. And the purchase of the Mahawi Pope, uh, house or the marble block. If you look over at the fourth column where it says balance forward, I was trying to take some of those numbers. That were on Chris's report. And say, let's use those first here. Now, you recall, I talked to you about emergency rental assistance. I'm budgeting and that's all this is, is a budget document, you know, because everybody's got to have a budget. Uh, going forward, saying, I anticipate that we'll spend. Fifty thousand dollars this year. Uh, on the down payment assistance, um. Emergency rental assistance program. Uh, here, that's money given to construct again. And the source would be thirty-five thousand going forward. Fifteen thousand from our current year funding. And if we do that, we'll have a zero balance going forward. I'm also anticipating that. Between now and July, we may have, uh. The ability to give two. Down payment assistance awards. Our maximum is twenty-five thousand dollars each. Uh. We have sixty-two fifty in, in that source, so I was thinking we could, you know. Put forty-five thousand of our current funds into that. I don't know that we're going to be able to do that, maybe for the Habitat House, we want one person, somebody else. If we don't, it's gonna fall over to the next year. Um. The. I put down the budgeted expense for the Mahawi Pope House. Uh, I don't know what's happening in that, whether it's gonna go forward. I didn't fund it for this year. But, um, and I put a note in the asterisk that said deferred. To after the July first, so I'm thinking of that as a next year project. That project is still viable. It's still a very good project for us. Um, we will have. Full, uh, pro formas available for you. For your consideration at the time that it comes back to us. As a, as a real world project. Um. The others are, uh, the ADU tiny house at forty thousand dollars. Uh, I. I'm skeptical right now that we're ever gonna have anything, whether we're gonna have anything this year from that program, so. That's where I was thinking, right there. Um. And then going forward, this is the next year's budget. Same kind of thing.
Back up for a second.
Yeah, of course.
Um, the. Monies for last year for the town budget, you were saying, for the forty thousand? You had mentioned forty thousand?
What, what's your question?
I thought you had mentioned something about, uh, forty thousand dollars and we were going to. Oh, the ADUs, ADUs, what if we're not? You mentioned that, you said you don't know if that's gonna happen. Is there another place we can put that?
Well, I think that there, I think the feedback, I mean, I really appreciate the work that's been put in. Uh, by certain committee members on the ADU and tiny house programs. But I'm personally skeptical that there are. That we're gonna be able to pull it off. In a, in a, in a short term. And have an ADU incentive program.
No man.
Uh, I'm. I haven't been convinced yet, let's put it that way. So this is my.
To that?
Yes, of course you may.
Yeah. Um, so I know that at one point, um, there had been a thought to combine the ADU tiny house. Proposals into one and we never really got further into that, but. Um. I think that the tiny house. Is, I think right now, as there have each been thought through, they're actually very distinct and have very different price points. So I, I would see it as very possible. To move forward on the tiny house within this fiscal year, but we'd actually need to dedicate time to wrap it up and get it out there. I think the ADU is a very different price point and it, I, I do think it is a valuable idea worth discussing. I don't see a budget plan anywhere that would support it so far. Which also makes sense because we haven't spent time discussing it.
Yeah. So, um. So I've, I've been going down the road a little bit on the tiny houses. And, um. Uh, I forget the name of the organization, uh, is it, is it Massachusetts Development Corporation or something? Uh, there's a, there's a corporation that, or there's a nonprofit that, that has a lot of advice about how you can use CPA funds for affordable housing. And I, I've been getting a lot of feedback from them. Um, and they had a lot of questions about tiny houses. Um, that I think are resolvable, but they were interesting, um. Basically, they're, they're big things, they're saying that the tiny house itself is for the. Or the, the renter is a big asset. Potentially a big asset like a, you know, sixty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, whatever. Um, and so that just if you were, they were saying, well, well, if you're. Doing an assistance, maybe you need to look at. Uh, include that in your, um, affordability, like you have to look at assets as well. Um. But, um, but the, the, the bigger issue that, that came up just talking about, um. The tiny houses was that. If we were gonna do like a pilot or something, uh. I think that what you would want to do before doing a pilot. Is you would want to have, uh, a registry of, um. Of, of available, available renters. And I'm, so I was thinking that, uh, like, uh, eligible, eligible renters. Um, and I was thinking that. That might be a good preliminary project for us to think about in general is. To, um. To create our, uh, eligible. Uh, eligible renter, renter list. Um, a subset of which could be eligible tiny house renters. Um, because the issue was that, uh, when we were talking about the pilot. Um. Basically, uh, there was like. There was the idea that like, oh, we have, we have a candidate, we can use this candidate. Like, like if we went forward, we could just use this candidate, it's like, no, you can't just use your candidate, it has to be like a random person. Like it can't just be like the person that you like. Uh, as the, as the candidate for the pilot. So in other words, you would want to be able to have a, have a database. Of people to pull out of and that, that's what, that's how you make it fair. Um, but I think in general, like, that might be something that would be, uh, like, that would be a good first step for any, any efforts. Um.
Okay. Okay, um, Ananda?
Um, I don't wanna sidetrack us, do, is this a time to talk a little bit more about that, Fred, or?
Well, um. I don't want to get into the weeds, I don't want to get into the details, um. I do want to talk about. Where we should be going with our efforts. Because, uh, there are two kinds of. Resources that we have and that's our time as a volunteer board. And, uh, the financial money that we can bring to, to, to the table. And I think ultimately. We need to think about. What makes the most impact and the most sense. Uh, going forward. I would put to you that ultimately we're granting a funding, I mean, our name is a trust fund. Uh, we're a funding, we're not a developer, we're not, you know, we provide grants to partners. Who then, uh. Provide housing.
Yeah, so.
In other words, so I, I don't want to get into it right now, but I want to, I do want, I do want to say that, you know, I think that we need to talk about it at least from a. A high level and see if it does make sense for members to pursue it.
Well, so this is what I would say from a high level or a couple of things. One, I think that, um. Both the ADU concept as it's outlined and the tiny house. Idea, um, are about being a granting organization, um, but to be able to have. The capacity to partner with, um, existing homeowners as another way to expand. Kind of neighborhood access to affordable housing options. So that's kind of my high level case for why I think they're both worth looking at. Um, I think with our current budget, we might need to sequence which can, what can move when. And I think the ADU concept. Um. Wouldn't fit in this year's budget unless. Funding currently allocated were to be freed up for some reason. Um. Joe, to what you were saying about the registry, I. Again, to kind of keep it high level and not weeds, I just want to offer. That I actually, I do think there's a way that's simpler than trying to build a list. Or do a survey which have, or community assessment or needs assessment. And I think that's the advantage of looking at like a pilot. Where you can, um, do, you know, structure it where you open, um. You open applications and do and advertise very well.
Right.
Um, and that's how you, and then if, you know, worst case scenario, and this is why I think it's worth us looking for this fiscal year and pushing for like launching something spring. Because if we really do the advertising well and people in the community are aware of it. Then the response rate tells us about need. And worst case scenario, nobody responds. Again, we have to make sure we've really done the advertising well. But let's say nobody responds or nobody responds meeting the criteria. Now we have all this data and we can decide if we're gonna tweak it. Or if we're just like, this is actually not a good fit for our community and we roll that funding into another purpose. So that's my high level case for, I think it's worth us looking at it. I'd love to see us spend like the next meeting act, really looking at both of these concepts and mapping out where we could go with them.
After, uh, I like that idea as well and I have to, I'm not quite sure where my apprehending comes from, but. I am apprehensive about the tiny house and ADUs and do we have a list of people that actually care or want these? Um. Some people don't want them on their properties, I guess, we've heard. That's my concern and, and the fact that. People don't really live in these very long. Uh, your tendency to move out of them within four or five years or less. So that concerns me as well. So we should talk about, love to have information, more information for me.
So I guess, I guess, um, what I've been thinking about, that kind of a very high level. Is that we've started to get into this, um. We've started to get into. Uh. A, um. We've, we've started to get in, into a cycle of putting a price. Amount on a unit of affordable housing. Uh, and it's, it's been pretty consistent across all these different meetings and, and it come across and like. Um, and Ian Rash's proposals that, you know, he's saying. A unit of affordable housing is two hundred thousand dollars. And a unit of, of, of rentable affordable housing is two hundred thousand dollars. And then we're saying. Uh, oh no, we can do even better, we can do, we can do a unit of affordable housing in perpetuity for one hundred thousand. So that's like, those are the numbers that we're throwing around, like that's like how we're. How we're actually like approaching each, each, each of these cases like. Um. Uh, like we threw like a hundred thousand dollars a marble house, uh, uh, to get one unit, right? At one hundred thousand. Um, so.
But also to secure the eight other units, right, like?
Yeah, but that, I mean, I, I wasn't at that meeting unfortunately, um, but like, one of my thoughts about that was that like. That was not anything to be really celebrated, that was basically treading water. Uh, like we literally didn't create any more affordable units. All we did was prevented affordable units from being taken away. Um, and, and so anyways, uh, so I, what, what I want to say is that the high level concept is that. Uh. Is that if we can't get money, then we're basically going to look at. We're gonna be looking at, you know, getting two affordable units every year. Because, because CPA is giving us two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Like literally. Unless we have some sort of leverage or some sort of, like some function in order to get the, the price of affordable housing units down. Which is what an ADU proposal is. Uh, like it's a, it's a way to say like, how do we, how do we create more volume, how do we create more volume without putting as much money in? Like, so, so that's why it's like, well, what if we give someone twenty thousand dollars and then they create the unit, now we've created. An affordable unit for twenty thousand, not a hundred thousand, we can create five for a hundred thousand. Um, and so it's just, it's just about ambition really. Um. That, uh. You know, it's just like, it, it's, it's, there's not enough money if, if we're gonna be doing it, the, essentially the, the way that. Private developers are proposing to do, like the, the, they're proposing. That, that a, a unit of affordable housing in Great Barrington should cost upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. And, and so like, and then, and then CPA, like literally CPA. Apparently they're gonna give more money to Ian Rash than, than they're giving to us. You know, so like that's, anyway, so I, the high level, the high level thing is. That. We need that we have to decide if we're just gonna kind of. Accept that we can't make like a huge difference over time or, uh, or we need to try to think about ways to, to have leverage.
Yeah, I just want to speak really quickly. Um, CPA. Did not accept Ian Rash's, uh, proposal for two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand per unit. And they basically cut his request in half. And said, and offered him a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Per affordable unit. I don't, he was not at the meeting, I do not know if he was, uh, would accept that or not. Uh, but. For whatever that means, you know, and. I also felt, and, and I've been at every meeting for the CPA, uh, where Ian Rush was there. I felt his math was a little fuzzy. I thought that his logic and his, uh, uh. Idea that we should be paying for the, we, the town should be paying for his profit going forward was a little fuzzy. Uh, a little weird. And, uh, I don't have the skills, you know, to challenge it in a, in a detailed way. But I just, I didn't buy the whole argument. Um, I, well, I also say, I mean, I agree with you, Joe, we need to figure out a way to stretch the money. Beyond what, what, uh, we're able to do now. We've done that with the down payment assistance program. And if, you know, if we were in North Adams instead of in Great Barrington. We could still be running that program, but, um. You know. But um, you know, everybody knows what's had the real estate market's done. My point or my or I think Joe's point and one of them that I take out of it is. There's no way that we can effectively buy our way out of. The affordable housing crisis, we can't make that big of an impact. We can't pay that much forever and ever. The whole Bill Shine article where he quotes uh. Uh. Vale and uh, you know, uh Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket. You know, those are very different communities on a very different financial scale than than we'll ever be. Or ever want to be. And so we're never gonna be able to 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 buy our way out of the affordable housing crisis. So how can we leverage our resources uh to make an impact? And you know, I think that there's a lot of issues with either the ADU or the tiny house. But Joe and Ananda who have looked into them feel that they're not insurmountable. That other towns are doing some sort of similar things and uh. I'm willing to be convinced, but um.
So have we looked into um getting a tax uh. Incentive of some kind for creating ADUs, you know, uh ten years of uh no taxes on the added value, something like that. Um.
Uh only to understand the mechanism. That I I don't know whether it has to be, I guess it has to be accepted by town by by the select board and then town meeting. But also then to be a home rule um, a home rule petition.
Can we get that rolling? Because I think.
We could do that. Um I believe it's been done in other towns.
Yeah. I think that's worth pursuing because. The cost of building something, I mean, you give somebody twenty thousand dollars to build an ADU. Well, that's not even ten percent of what they're gonna need. Um, that's not much incentive.
Ananda.
Um, I think that that gets us into actually talking about the proposals and the work that Joe has done and the work that I have done. And we um we've talked a bit about the tiny house proposal over several meetings. Um but we have not talked about my proposal. So that's why I suggest that we actually set some time aside, like the majority of a meeting agenda to look at each separately. And understand what us um what is being proposed. Maybe like in the case of the tiny house, look at some of the sticking points that and questions we have about whether or not we can move forward.
Yeah, I mean, right now I feel like we've got these two. Parallel, similar, but not the same proposals. And my brain is saying combine them and solve all of the issues at once. But I hear you and I hear Joe saying they're not similar. I mean, they're similar, but there's enough you unique enough that they need their own solution.
Oh, sorry.
And I think we need to deal with one or the other.
I I I actually, sorry, I I actually think we should do, I think we should focus on ADU. Because I and I've, what you've said, um Fred, I agree with is that. The ADU will give us the legal structure, the 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 financial structure if we do the tiny house. Like, you know what I mean? I I think the tiny houses can be treated as a subset of ADU. So I think we should talk about the ADU proposal next, like the next time.
Ananda.
Um, that's fine with me. I I think part of, I think that eventually we could have one single program. Um I and I think, I think there could be value in piloting each component separately budget wise. Um and I think it's just, I think it's worth talk having, talking about it next meeting. And I'm, you know, and I did the um, the outline I did. I did intentionally in broad strokes so that there'd be enough detail to discussion for discussion. But room for us to be working through the concept together.
Well, why don't I send that around again?
Please.
Uh and we'll dedicate the next meeting to looking at the ADU um. I still think that, you know, there may be some news that I up need to update you on uh, or maybe I can do that through. Uh our packet uh but uh, or or try to make it brief.
And the, an update on the um CPA funds, I'm looking at the minutes um. Alander was awarded. One fifty for historic that they accepted, but the two housing um. At one twenty eight each were uh, Alander did not accept the terms, so those funds will. Those funds will go back into the CPA.
Right.
Um. Yeah, um Alander was the what they, Ian was not at the meeting and he didn't have a representative at the meeting, so uh. Thank you for that update. Um.
Thank Jeremy.
I still think his math is. I still think his math is screwy. Um. Uh while we have just a few minutes and it's it's already eight o'clock, uh. Bill had some ideas and uh that that were good. What I'd like to do is is see. If there's anything that we're missing, if there is, how can we make an impact? We, Bill brought us the proposal for the Mahawi Pope Street Project. And we've talked to CDC and uh they are enthusiastic about the project. I'd like to be involved with that going forward, uh you know, perhaps in the summer. Or 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 third or fourth quarter this year, uh but. I I'd like to turn it over to Bill, you shared some ideas with me, one of which was the the tax incentive for ADUs.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I think that would really be a little bit more of an incentive than. Even how much ever money we could use to subsidize something like that. Um. The other thing, and I don't know if the board would agree with me on this, is to. Uh send a letter to Smitty and Paul Mark to amend the residential exemption tax policy. To include a home rule option to give the exemption. To landlords of apartments who rent ye- to year round residents. That would have two effects, it would, it would um diminish the appeal of the short term rental market. Because you would not get the exemption for that. Of course, the select board would still have to um. You know, choose to use the residential exemption. Uh and they came close, they discussed it this year. But one of the problems was it was going to affect landlords who rented their property. They would not get the rental ex- exemption, even if it was a year round rental. And that has to be something that the state has to fix. Before I think our select board is willing to go out on a limb and. Do the rest, which I think would help a tremendous number of people in town be able to afford their property and. Especially landlords would have to rent year round. Which would sort of help eliminate the uh, the number of short term rentals that are going on.
Remind us what the residential exemption is, please?
Uh, the simplest way is probably, everybody gets a hundred thousand dollars taken off their taxes. The tax rate increases to compensate for that. So that the people with the um smaller houses that are worth two or three hundred thousand. Would have their tax bill cut by a third, whereas somebody with a million dollar house, you take a hundred thousand dollars off of that. Doesn't make all that much difference. Um and people who don't live in town full time would have to pay that higher tax rate on everything.
Um, two quite, two things, one, it sounds more like a select board issue than a affordable housing trust issue.
It is, except if we're trying to make housing more affordable in Great Barrington. I think the residential exemption is a great tool to use, but the select board is very hesitant to do that. Because of the concern about having rental prices go up. Because the landlords who own year round rentals. Would have to basically increase the rent to pay for that tax. Because they would not get the exemption unless the state creates that, so I think we should be. Uh lobbying for that essentially. Yeah, at a state level.
Uh, Ananda.
So to clarify, Bill, you're suggesting that we lobby at a state level. Just specific to the rental units?
Yes. A lot of the time, like out in the eastern part of.
Which rental units would you be lobbying to? To?
Anybody that rents year round. Would get.
Regardless of. Regardless of the price of the unit?
Yes. They don't have. Yes.
One is that, well, I'll I'll make the statement, I'm not lying, but you know that has not been a very popular proposal. Not sure how much time we should invest in that unless you're saying the state, if if we're gonna get the state to make the exemption. Then maybe the select board would be more uh.
Yes, that's.
Exactly, as opposed to, but you you know, so I'm not sure how much time we should spend on it. And it's awful late right now to get into this. Um it's after eight. I'm probably wrong there, I don't know about anybody else, but this is a long discussion, it shouldn't be starting now.
Okay.
Ananda.
Uh, I'm, I will just second Garfield then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, anything quickly, Bill, other than that?
Um. Was it, no, that was about it. Um you you covered, one of the other things I was talking about was getting some dedicated percentage of the room tax.
Yep. Um, I I, you know, go back to what I said earlier and I I'm just gonna wrap up. I that um, I think that we need to make a case for getting the room tax. Uh what we would do with the money. Uh. What you have up in front of your screen right now is just a draft. Uh there, we can, you know, we certainly can um. And and this is a similar one, same sort of thing. We can certainly um. Talk about these kinds of things where we allocate our money. I think that as you know, Joe had mentioned that. Even by supporting CDC, we're just treading water and not creating additional housing units. I think that if we can leverage our money to create additional housing units and do it throughout the community. And and again, the ADU has a good thing, we're better off. I think that it's a mistake for our town. To be putting these large affordable housing projects up at um. Windrush and uh, I don't know what the name of the other one is, our Pentley Apartments. Uh where, you know, you've got all of your affordable housing for the whole town in one or two buildings. I think we need to do it in a scattered site kind of way.
Okay.
Throughout Uzatonic, throughout, you know, Great Barrington, throughout Belcher Square, throughout, you know. Every, every kind of area and neighborhood that we can. Um.
I totally agree.
Good, thank you. Um, and so I wanna think about that going forward. Um. What I will do is uh send around uh Ananda's work on the ADU. We will dedicate the next meeting to talking about the ADUs, we'll try to get into it within. A half an hour of starting the meeting, uh which may be pretty good for us or for me. Um and uh spend at least an hour talking about it in there, so um I'll send that around. Guys, take a look at it, if you have any questions, be prepared. Uh hopefully uh. We can make some progress.
Next meeting date, please?
Uh.
You'll have to send that out. Have there been any, Fred, have there been any requests for ADUs?
I do not know that we have a format for that. Um.
We don't actually have a program yet.
I know that, that was what I was asking.
Yeah, uh. We don't have anything for that yet.
Uh, the next meeting date is the twenty first of February, a Tuesday.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Uh, anybody wants to come in person, we can meet in the select board office, but you know, I don't think this crowd wants to meet in person, so. Uh. Uh, and any more, any members or trustees have any additional comments?
I do. I like the way we're starting to move forward and and we're starting to gel and we're starting to focus on things. And I think this is a good meeting and I think they'll only get better going forward.
Uh, yeah, I think we've had a couple of rocky meetings and I hopefully they will go better. Um, is there any uh media comments?
No media.
Hearing none. Uh, any citizen speak? Not seeing anything on my screen.
Ted, Jerry, Jeremy Hager.
I, I don't see any comments or anybody wanting to be recognized. So uh without objection, I'm going to end the meeting and say good night to everybody. Eight fourteen uh, meeting uh ended.
Good job, Fred, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.